Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Join me as we pray. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank for the beautiful weather that you've given us this fall, and I think with this time that we can come together and do the business of the city. And as we go into this holiday of Thanksgiving, may we come with hearts of gratitude and giving thanks for the things that you have provided to us throughout this past year, and the country that we live in, the city that we live in, and those who are around us, our family and our friends, and may we come and give thanks to you for the grace that you have shown us. Be with us now as we do this work, and we give the praise and glory for what you do, and may we be honoring to you, and it's in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is over the roll, please.
Kerry Hod, Ward 1. Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Kerry Rock, Ward 3.
Here.
Todd Poole, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Taffrin, Ward 6.
Thank you, Meredith. Our first tour of business tonight is the approval of our council meeting minutes from November 7th, and council you've had an opportunity to look these over and review its contents. If there are any additions or edits to be made, now would be the time to do that, and if not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second. All in favor of the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hardegre, if you will get us started this evening with Z-1905.
All right, Mr. Mayor. So this versus owning case is for 350 North Irvin Street. Earlier this summer, I was contacted by a fence installer, let me know what was happening up here. This land is actually owned by a local general contractor, Johnson Smith. He has an administrative office on Gilmer Street, but he needs a place to keep his heavy equipment, dump trucks, that sort of thing. So he needs to store that equipment out here, because currently it's on general commercial. He's not allowed to have outdoor storage of general contractor equipment. There's also an issue with that fence installation of it being in the front yard, which is not allowed by any GC district. As a light industrial, which we suggested and recommended in the application for you, he would get some relief to the fence requirements and be allowed to store his equipment outside. So we recommend approval, planning commission recommends approval 6-0 with that. The applicant does have a representative here tonight if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for David at this point? Thank you, sir. At this point, I'll open up a public hearing relative to file case Z-1905, and ask anybody who wishes to step forward and speak for or against to do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for Z-19-05, and we will not vote this evening since it's a first reading. We will take this up for final consideration at our first meeting in December, which is the December 5th, which is a morning meeting. Please note that. David, if you'll continue us on with Z-19-06.
All right, so this next application is for 1136 and 1138 North Tennessee Street, which is the old Bradshaw Office Park, the Bradshaw Dairy property, at the corner of West Felton and North Tennessee Street. One parcel is shown, the primary parcel, which is undeveloped. A second parcel associated with this is the car wash property, which is the general commercial in the front by Tennessee Street. If you remember, last year, October, you approved a special use permit for a mixed-use development at this location. That was office and retail on the bottom floors of several complexes with condo and apartments above. That special use was approved with a condition that a fence be installed along the Point North neighborhood just to the west. Following that special use application, that approval, the applicant set out to find financing for the project. He hit some snags with being able to get that financing. So in order to appeal to the investors, he's taken a step back, looked at this from a different angle. He thinks he needs to increase his residential component and decrease the office, which actually, it's a different product. He's actually decreasing the quantity of residential products. Initially, there were 78 apartment units planned. Here we have a graphic that shows the current proposed plan on the left, and last year's special use proposed plan on the right. What he's done is he's proposed with the townhome product on the left, a downgrade from 78 apartments last year to 38, 39 townhome apartments this year. It's also taking off the office and retail spaces, a downgrade from 29,000 square feet of office retail to 6,000 square feet of office retail. With that, the planning commission did review this. They had several point of contention or items, so there were points of contention for them regarding the three and four-bedroom townhomes that were presented, not having enough recreation space for the potential families that would occupy those townhomes. There was concerns about those townhomes being converted to rental units, as well as how the road would be handled, public versus private. Those items were captured in your packet as well. Now, recently before, or before, just this week, before or after your packets went out, we did have some new information coming in. There's elevations of how the townhomes would look, very similar to other townhome developments like Lenox Park, and I think it's also some of what's being proposed also at Edwak Reserve, which we're still waiting on plans for. So we have, that's a look of what they are proposing. There's also some more information that I know the applicant and his consultants will present to you tonight regarding the housing stock in the Cartersville, that they're going to present, that there's no real townhome product that's available out there, and that this would potentially meet the demand of a product that is in demand, and they're confident that they could sell the 37, or 38, 39 townhomes that are proposed. Again, there was some contention with planning commission, they did vote to deny the application 6-0.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Hardegre, at this time. Thank you, sir. And now I'll open up a public hearing for file case Z-19-06, and ask anybody who wishes to step forward and speak for or against to do so at this time. And as you do, if you will please state your name and your address for our clerk, please.
Yes, my name is Baja Karasmi. The address of the property or my personal resident address?
What do you need for that, Meredith? For the minutes?
Your home address.
3534 Daventry Lane, Kennesaw.
What was the street, I'm sorry?
Daventry Lane.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Well, first of all, I wanted to thank you for the approval we had last year. It was, seems like it was just yesterday I was here, to have a product that we're really proud of, to present, do a lot of hard work and get it to where we almost had the civil engineering done, and the bank criteria and conditions for the loan had changed. That as, that loan and criteria would work for the building won by the street, it will not work for the rest of the property. Briefly, they want it as a rental and 51% commercial income to be able to do this loan. They will not do a flat-out condominium loans at this time. So going back to drawing board, my agents and brokers are here. Going basically with their word that there is a great need for townhomes in city of Cartersville. She will come here later and share some numbers with you, but we have really reduced it, made it simple, 37 three-bedroom townhomes. And we are going to try to see if we can get some master on main units. We may even reduce number of the townhouses to be able to achieve that. It's going to be very simple. It'll be done all in two phases, and then we'll be able to do the office and knock out the car wash and do the mixed-use zoning, so we'll keep that part of it alive.
So your plan is to do all the residential and then do the commercial piece, sir?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't know how far you are in the plans of it, but is there, do you have a breakdown of how many of the 39 units, how many are going to be single-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom? Are you that far?
Actually, it's 37 units, they're all three-bedrooms right now.
All of them would be three-bedroom?
All of them will be three-bedrooms, yes.
And what, do you anticipate the price range for these being?
We're going to be in the low 200s.
Okay. How are you going to handle the parking?
The parking, as you see, the garages are according to the code, they drive around, all the garages are in the back of the, may I walk over there to show?
Please, yeah.
These are the backs of the property, these are the fronts. All of them are rear-entry garages, so all of these are garages. There are some parking designed for guests, so even if when you come here, this is the front, and these are the garages, and this is according to the code. It has to be a rear-entry.
Will the HOA allow any on-street parking?
There will be an HOA.
Will it allow any on-street parking?
Well, since we have designed a lot of parking for guests, I don't anticipate any street parking, besides, we will have additional parking, as you see in the retail area, that visitors can park, but I think we should have ample parking for visitors.
And you mentioned about the rental versus ownership. You still intend to sell these townhomes, or they will be rental units?
Yeah, the rentals will be only the commercial building up front. That's the lone criteria at the moment, but all the townhomes will be for sale.
Okay. And I know last year when you were here with us, there was a lot of discussion about a fence, and what type of fence, and how high the fence was going to be, all that, you're still agreeable to all those conditions?
We are agreeable to the conditions. It was an eight-foot fence.
Yeah.
I did ask when I was here last week, that since we're going with townhomes between residents, I think six-foot fence will look better. If they want eight-foot fence, we'll do it. It's just that I think it's way too high between residences to have eight-foot fence.
Okay. All right. Any other questions at this time? Yes, sir.
Your investors this time are more inclined to approve the finances for this new?
Yes, we have gone back to the bankers, investors, this is okay, and if we have to do two buildings at a time out of pocket, this time we are able to do, so this will get done.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Karasmi, at this time.
The, just the, the product that you had before last year, and the level that you were at as quality and aesthetics, is this a step down, or are you going to hold up to that?
It's not a step down as far as the quality of finishes, inside and outside. We would have liked to do better, but I hear the market is best for $200,000 townhomes. Interior-wise, we're going to do as good a finishes as we had planned before. And exterior-wise, they're going to look nice.
And I know it's only been a year, but I'm getting older. Is this, have you done developments like this before, or are you modeling this after a development that exists in another community?
I have not done it for ourselves, no.
Okay.
I was mostly a commercial developer.
Thank you. And I know, as Mr. Hardegre mentioned, there was some discussion about, I guess at the planning commission, concern about recreational areas. Obviously, you're going to have three-bedroom apartments, or three-bedroom townhomes. You're anticipating, there was a concern about recreational areas.
Yes, they were concerned about that, because at a time, I did mention that we may do three and four-bedroom units. We getting away from four-bedroom units, and from what my agents have said, they're here today, they say most of the people with children, they do buy houses in Cartersville because they do want that backyard. We're not really targeting people with children, hopefully starter homes, and if we can get some master on main, it'll be active adult-type community. We do have, in the main building that we build later, because that's what the swimming pool and recreation area was designed for the whole complex before, so we will have that, and they will have the opportunity probably to join that activity.
Where would that be on your?
This one is still same here, that's going to exist, and the clubhouse and everything will be on the main level facing the swimming pool.
So that's behind the commercial element?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Are you planning to keep the road as a private road, and then have the HOA, and so these will be owned units, and they'll have the HOA, and they'll take care of the road, or are, what's your plan there?
Well, we had a discussion with Mr. Hardegre, we're open to the idea, either way, if the city suggests they'd like to keep the road, I don't mind if they like the HOA to maintain it and keep it, we open to that idea as well.
I think that the development practices are the same either way.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, the way it is in the opening, that really doesn't change. However, during development, I will suggest we do some sort of speed bumps to slow the traffic down, because at this time, since there's nothing developed, I do know people go there and they do drive fast, so we do want to control that a little bit once we do the residential.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is public hearing for Z-19-06, and once again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time.
Hand it down, I'll review.
You'll hand that to our clerk, and she can pass that down for you.
Thank you. My name is Joan Manis, and I am a Realtor with Homestead Properties. You want my home address?
Please.
121 Bowman Road in Calhoun. But I'm coming back to Cartersville, I'm just flipping. I'm actually flip-flopping, or I'd already been back, but if you would look at this when it's passed out, I went in and I did some pulling off of our commercial, I mean our professional site for homes in Cartersville City only. I didn't, I didn't go out on U-Harley Road or planners where everybody has a zip code that looks like it's Cartersville City, so I strictly went by the city limits and the homes that are sold, that are available, and what type they are. It's very, it's very elementary, but I went and targeted the price range that we're looking at building the townhomes in. I think you'd be surprised at the little activity there is in Cartersville City on homes. So if you'll just look up here, I attached homes from the 200 to the $250,000 range in the Cartersville City Limits. There's currently none available, and there was none sold in the last 180 days in that price range, okay, attached. There are attached ones, but they all tend to be in a lower price range. The only thing that would be even similar is Lenox Park, and I pulled the information on that, and there's one that sold in Lenox Park in the last year, okay, one that has turned over there in the last year, and it sold for $185,400. The next one is the detached homes in the city from 200 to 250. Currently on the market, there's three, three-bedrooms available, there's three, four-bedrooms available, and there's one, six-bedroom available, there's seven currently available in the city limits in that price range. Then sold in the last six months, three two-bedrooms, 24 three-bedrooms, 12 four-bedrooms, and two five-bedrooms, so 41 units in the last six months and so. What this says is, we're in need of houses, and I know all of you probably know that. I didn't do any of the county, that the numbers would have been a little bit larger if I'd done the county. So we believe there's a real market for townhomes. You have a lot of millennials moving into this area, some of them don't have children, don't want a big yard. We find that's a trend now. People don't want a big yard to take care of, whether they're downsizing, or whether they're buying their first home. So we believe that the market has certainly increased for this type of building, and would love to see these built. I believe we could sell them even pre-construction. And one of the reasons that we changed a little bit on the plan was, was that we had done some study and questioning, and we talked to Melinda Lemons and several people in the medical industry, and we were looking at like office condos that people would actually buy, and we just didn't determine that there was a market for that yet in the Cartersville area. I think that might be a little bit ahead of the time here, but we definitely need housing, so we were a little bit instrumental in asking him to consider doing all residential units.
Would you agree with the assertion, you took numbers between 200 and 250?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Houses that are valued, when you say there's no inventory and houses aren't selling in the city of Cartersville?
Well, there aren't any, it's not, they're not selling.
As I'm saying?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that, because you made it sound like it could have been misheard, that, that there aren't any houses selling. The ones that are selling in Cartersville are typically probably valued above 250.
That's right, yeah.
But you're saying that this, in this particular segment of the market, for people that are looking for this type of housing?
That's right.
That that product is not available?
Exactly.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I'm glad you clarified that, thank you.
You're on the same page on that.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you.
And we'll continue on with Z-19-06. Anybody else wishes to step forward, they may do so at this time.
My name is Dean Bagwell, I live at 1043 Casewatt Road. I'm here representing Barto County Foreign Bureau. It's a federation industry. Our main focus is insurance, but it has nothing to do with the federation. Federation is totally nonprofit. Our concern is, our building is in front of this. We're worried about parking, we're worried about the number of cars that will be going in and out. We currently have trouble getting in and out of Tennessee Street. I guess it doesn't matter whether the road is private or public, as long as it exits out onto Felton Road, so that our people have learned, our employees go that way now, 100% of the time. They go to Felton Road to get to the traffic light to get into Tennessee Street.
So you, so you want connectivity to that road?
Yes.
Okay.
A lot of our customers have learned to come that way. And we're still a little concerned about parking on the weekend, people have parties. We're afraid that they will spill over into our parking lot, not be able to drive home. Monday morning, we'll have a parking lot full of people, and we're limited on the number of parking places we have there now. If you go to 37 townhomes and you do three-bedroom, you're still talking 70, 80 people that's going to be in and out there, so we're, we're really concerned about the population that's going to be in there. When we built there, we thought that was all going to be more commercial-type business instead of residential. Think that would be more conducive with what we are on the front. You know, I really can't say anything about the housing market or anything like that. We're just concerned about that with this, and what that might do to our value on the property if we elect to relocate somewhere else. We currently own 85% of that building, and it's, it's been difficult to rent the two suites that we don't need. Back when we built it, we was given information that we would be occupying the whole building. That has totally changed since we moved in. So we could get by with one of the suites now, and not have the big building that we have. It's just that, you know, you got more and more people coming in. We've had an issue here in the last month with homeless people behind us. They charging their free cell phones on our power, they're using our water to bathe and wash their clothes with, and anytime you get more people in there, we got that concern that, you know, I don't expect it, they're not expecting that to happen, but I'm told I'm a pessimist, I always try to look at both sides of the issue. I don't always look at the upside, I look at what happens if this happens. So that is our position on it. We would like to, to work with the people and be included in the discussion about what's going on. That's been very limited at this time, so there again, we, we speaking about the parking and number of cars that go in and out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Continuing on with Z-19-06, anybody else wishing to speak for or against? And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for Z-19-06, and again, this will be taken up for consideration by council at our meeting on December 5th, and again, I will remind you, it is a 9 o'clock AM meeting right here.
Matt, if you will, can I ask David one more question, please?
You certainly can. Mr. Hardegre.
I don't see anywhere in our notes, and I didn't want to go another couple weeks without asking. I mean, this was voted 6-0 from the planning commission to deny.
Correct.
Were you at that meeting?
I was.
Did, I mean, obviously, a year ago, we all voted to approve the project with studios and more commercial and all that. What was their main reasoning for all six of them to go against this?
Randy and I, Randy was there also, we were both a little confused over how they voted, why. There were several topics of discussion. I can tell you that they did talk about the recreation needs for three and four-bedroom townhomes, which wasn't represented on the plan. They did talking about, they did talk about managing rental versus owner-occupied units, and they kept referencing issues with the Mountain Chase development that we have now, that's ongoing. They also talked about the merits of a private versus public street, and they also had some discussion.
And I don't want to cut you off here, but isn't a lot of that exactly what, I mean, as far as the private street versus not?
It's not related to zoning, no.
Okay, and, okay, so, but if we vote no on this right now, in a couple weeks, whatever day, it can still go back to what we had already approved, right?
It could, yes.
So I mean?
There's a couple of options. It could go back to the mixed-use under the special use permit, which is the plan on the right.
Like the plan on the right, correct?
That's correct. Or it could go back to, it's currently zone office commercial back there, it could go back to all office commercial uses as well.
That's, that was all I needed to hear.
They probably haven't had that discussion about financing yet, but that's.
Well, I mean, that's not for us to decide if this can be financed or not.
That's correct.
Okay.
There's two options there.
All right. Thank you, David. You good?
Yeah.
All right. So we will finish that out, and again, that'll be taken up on December 5th, and we will move on to SU-19-07. Mr. Hardegre, once again, whenever you're ready, get your steps in tonight.
All right, so this is a special use permit for 375 Goethfield Park Road, I think I got that street number right. This special use permit is for a waste transfer station. What makes this application a little unique, and I know that you'll want discussion on that, is that a large part of the business, and there's four components to the business, is for a waste disposal business, medical waste disposal. The site plan that they presented to us has four buildings on there. Currently on site, there's two buildings. Those two buildings are the gray buildings that you see on the screen. The first component, as I mentioned, is their medical waste business, and that's where they bring the medical waste in, they sterilize it, they chop it up, they prepare it, ship it out to a landfill. That would go into the blue building to the top right corner. Second component of their business model is the, what happened in the gray building to the top, upper-left, and that's for a document shredding business that they look at. I'm assuming that's an extension of their medical clients. Below that, in the blue building on the bottom left, which is a proposed new building, that would be, we'll call it general household disposal, general household trash disposal, which is an area of the business that they can, they can probably give some more details on how that's going to play out, since they're focused on commercial aspects of the other components. The fourth component of their business in the bottom right would be offices and pharmaceutical disposal, would be old pharmaceuticals, old medicines, out-of-date medicines that would be disposed of. Since we're talking about the pharmaceuticals, we're talking about the potential of the needles and then the meds, there's a security component to this. Planning commission did have an extensive discussion on security for the site, and that was one of the conditions for the site. So as planning commission reviewed this, they took into consideration department comments, there were several department comments that were made about this project. They can all be addressed during plan review. They really dealt with spacing between the buildings, having 24-hour access to the site for utility access, and then dealing with the floodplain issue that's on the lower half of the property. half of the property. But most, all this development's occurring on the top half of the property. And again, those are items that were identified that we would address during plan review. Planning Commission, upon review and discussion of this, did vote to approve this 5 to 1 with two conditions. First condition being that medical waste cannot be chemically treated. And then a second condition was that there should be off-hour or after-hour security at all times on-site. Back to the first condition, which, which had a lot of discussion, and we're all aware of it, was Sterigenics Plant in Covington and Smyrna. They are also a sterilization, medical sterilization company, but they use a chemical treatment to sterilize. And it's that chemical, ethylene oxide, which is known to cause cancer, and that's where the issues came from. That was all in the media in the last two or three months. I'll let them speak to the, the applicant speak to the technical issues around how they're actually gonna sterilize their equipment, the processing procedures and equipment they're gonna use. But Planning Commission did recommend to approve this application with the two conditions that I just mentioned regarding no chemical, no chemically treated medical waste and after-hour security.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for David at this time? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I will open up the public hearing for SU-19-07. And ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against, to do so at this time.
Good evening.
I'm Brandon Bowen. I know all of you. Office is about a block down. I live at 17 River Shoals Drive, and I'm here on behalf of Regulated Services, which is a full-service waste service company. And our goal, obviously, as you heard Mr. Hart agree say, is to, is to develop this site for, for a variety of waste streams. Regulated Services, LSC, is made of several folks in the waste industry currently. Predominantly, we have Cash Environmental Services, who has been doing waste facility work in the southeast for many years. And I, and I have here today Kevin Cash, who will, is here to speak on behalf of Regulated Services and Cash Environmental, as well as Kevin Berry, who is their engineer. He'll be able to answer technical questions. I'll tell you upfront that I was a history major when I went to school. So if you ask really hard science questions, I'm gonna pass. Okay, so obviously, the property is in the heavy industrial park. It's on Industrial Road. It's in an area situated for heavy industrial work. It is currently being used as a trucking company. Mr. Speech is the owner, I believe he is here. There are two existing buildings, which are gray on that plat, and we would propose to build two more, which are blue on that plat. The rest, the request for special use permit is for a transfer station, and obviously, the, the medical waste component is the primary reason for it. The front or top-right blue building would be, new building, would be designed to hold an autoclave, which is something like a pressure cooker, to use my history major terminology, and a boiler, which will sanitize waste so it can be safely disposed of. Obviously, the gorilla in the room and on the cover of the AJC over the last few months has been what's been going on in Cobb County and in Covington, and that is not what this is. My understanding is that those facilities are designed to sterilize equipment so it can be reused and have a chemical process with emissions to do that. We do not wish to do that here. It is simply making the waste very hot, like 200, well over 200 degrees, for quite a while, over 30 minutes at high pressure, so that it is, basically, everything in there is killed so it can be safely put in the landfill, not reused or anything of that nature. And then when it comes out of that process, it goes through a shredder, which reduces its size by about 65% so that it can be, you know, it can take up less of the landfill. Mr. Berry can talk to you about, in detail about that. There was a question about PSI at the Planning Commission. He can answer that for you. The other aspects, just to touch on those again. So the bottom, the bottom right there, that would be a location for pharmaceutical disposal, drug disposal. That would be regulated by the DEA. We'll have to get a permit from the DEA if we get past the special use permit process. Importantly, and this goes to one of the issues that the Planning Commission raised as far as security, they placed, recommended a condition that there be a certain security. And so since that meeting, I pull those, those requirements, and I'll share those with you. We're happy with these as, to be part of the condition. What the DEA would require is 24/7 video monitoring of the facility. Excuse me, I jumped ahead of myself. No, that's right, that's right. 24/7 alarm monitoring by an independent company, fenced and gated access. And then in regards to the drugs themselves, they controlled, scheduled controlled pharmaceuticals would have to be within a locked vault, and other drugs would have to be within a cage and be locked at all times. So DEA will require this to be a secure site, and we're happy to make that a condition of the, of any approval. So that, that's the pharmaceutical aspect on the bottom right. On the top left, that would be, the goal there is to make that a document shredding facility. Yes, it would be something that hospitals could use, but it wouldn't be limited to hospitals. Offices could use it as well. So that would be, the idea would be, they come in, it would be shredded and then sent to a landfill. And in the bottom left, blue, is a new building, that would be for MSW and CND waste. Obviously, the, other than the pharmaceuticals, which would go to an incinerator, the medical waste and the shredded waste will ultimately go into, to a landfill.
And just for those, the, the initials that you said stand for what?
MSW is trash that we have in your.
Medical solid waste?
No, municipal solid waste. So it's the same stuff that we all dispose of at our house. And the CND is construction and demolition, so that's tuba floors, concrete, all that stuff that gets generated when we tear a house down or build a house. So those would be the four aspects of it. The back half, it's, the total property is five acres. The back half is in floodplain, and we don't have any plans for using it at this point. So there were some comments by the various department heads that are contained in the staff analysis. We're fine with all those comments, so that's not an issue. With that said, I think maybe, I've got Kevin. I'll answer any questions you have for me, but I've got the engineer here who may ask any more technical questions or answer any technical questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bowen?
I take it from your rundown of the DEA requirements for security that you don't particularly feel like it's necessary to have the 24-hour onsite security?
Well, that's not what the DEA requirements are. It's, it can be done via, via video and alarms. Or any other questions for me?
But that was what was requested.
That's a proposed condition by the, by the Planning Commission.
Yeah, at the Planning Commission.
And I don't know that they have, and I think you said during the Planning Commission meeting, you didn't have those requirements presented to them.
I did not. I didn't know what they were at that time.
So it's very likely, we'll make the determination on that. That condition stands or if the DEA ones are sufficient.
Yeah.
And the, at the Planning Commission, there was a lot of discussion of security. I don't know that they said specifically onsite, human person or a security guard onsite all the time. You know, if that's a requirement of the council, we can certainly look at that, but.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Berry, can you just, you know, kind of explain the process if you've got?
Sure. Kevin Berry, 660 Bear Creek Road, Carrollton. I'll clarify one thing, just so we're clear. There will be no disposal, this is the engineer me coming out, there's no disposal onsite. This is simply a handling facility and a processing facility. So the transfer station is, is a requirement for the autoclave. Once it's autoclaved, it's placed in the boiler, it's sterilized, then it's reduced, and then in order to ship it, then it is classified by EPD as a municipal solid waste. So then to transfer it to a landfill, a disposal facility, the transfer station is the requirement for that. So that, that's how the components are, are placed together. And then the pharmaceuticals, they will be handled and delivered here and not processed by any means. It's more of a, a collection point, and then they will be taken off-site to an incinerator, probably out of state. So just want to clarify a few things there.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question about, and again, the Sterigenics thing, I understand that's something entirely different, but if you would, because I think some people want to know the, the level of controls and regulatory, regulatory oversight that's done from the outside into your company and the kind of business that you do.
Sure. So beyond what happens here in the city, in the city oversight, Georgia Environmental Department, Environmental Protection Division will require a permit be applied for and conditions set forth in that, an operations plan, a design and operations plan that will dictate how the facility operates. And then they have a permit that's classified under the, the treatment, and it specifies the type of treatment will be an autoclave, which is strictly steam sterilization, no chemicals, no emissions from that. So, so that's the permit that'll be held to, and we'll prepare a plan that speculate or specifies the operations and the manner in which all of that is accomplished. And so from a state regulatory side, that will be managed from the EPD and be inspected regularly by the EPD.
And any other particulates or things that would be included in that steam as it comes at the end of the process?
Yes, and, and there's, the steam will be, it will not be a steady smoke stack of steam, and they can even reduce the amount of steam from the process if they want as well. It's just sort of a batch. When they run the batch, the boiler, this, it has to be 250 degrees for at least 30 minutes. And so when that's done, then they open the autoclave and the energy releases out of that, and then the steam's released from that. So it is purely hot water, hot air that comes out of that, no particulates.
Okay. Thank you.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but so long as it's simply an autoclave, there's not an air emissions permit required by EPD, or is there any kind of water permit required?
Because the off-water, there will be water that's produced that will be sterile as well, and it will just be disposed of in the sanitary sewer. And all this is enclosed in a building, and honestly, the only thing you'll see appear as industry would be the steam that gets left off periodically.
I think you'd also asked about any other compliance.
Yes, sir.
So Brandon had mentioned, there are, there are DEA regulations that will be in compliance with as well, in terms of the handling of the pharmaceuticals.
Can you speak a little bit to your company's history in this type of industry?
So we have been. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm Kevin Cash, 558 Faith Street, Marietta. So our family's been involved in the waste business for, since the mid-'80s in just about every different waste stream, municipal solid waste, construction demolition waste, liquid waste, processing. The only thing in this process that we have not directly done is the autoclave process, which as Brandon mentioned, is a giant pressure cooker. So we are bringing in to our team folks who have experience and expertise in this, but from a logistical side, as far as the trucking, the treatment, the handling, the processing, and ultimately, we've been, we are involved on the disposal side, not at this location that have any other places. That's been something that we've been involved with now for about four decades.
And what type of volumes of MSW are you planning on producing?
So that's a, that's a question that.
Hopefully, a lot, right?
The business, the business person side of me hopes that it's quite a bit.
Yeah.
There clearly are limits in terms of the marketplace. We're not the only provider of this kind of service around, that we can only go so far out away from our location before trucking makes us non-competitive. So we would be, and there's also a size issue. I have Josh Bennett. Josh, would you estimate what we could potentially run through there in terms of MSW, or do you want to take a stab at that? Josh, Josh runs our Georgia operations for us now.
Sure.
I'm Josh Bennett, 5806 Markwell Ridge in Brazelton, Georgia. But as far as volume, obviously, it would start slow and then try to build up, and I would say, just MSW or all, all disposal?
I guess the question would be better asked, five trucks a day, 500 trucks a day? How much, what do you, I mean, what kind of volumes are we speaking of?
Volume coming in, I would say, starting out, maybe 30 trucks a day, you know, not much, and then building up to maybe 100, 150, something like that, in terms of trucks, yes. I'm talking about stuff coming in.
Right.
And it's not necessarily a big garbage trucking, you know, it could be residential.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue on with the public hearing for SU-19-07, and ask anybody else who would care to step forward, speak for or against, to do so at this time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jackie Royles. I reside at 117 Woodland Drive in Cartersville. And we've heard a lot of statistics tonight, and I would just like to make some comments. So Sterigenics, we've all heard of that if we've been watching the news. I understand the difference in this, but we know that several of these facilities have closed recently because of problems with emissions. Now, we know that the emissions can cause cancer. The statistics are there from the Public Health Department of Illinois, who's just closed their facility, Willowbrook. These are especially damaging to women and children. So I'm concerned. I get that this is going to have steam coming out of it, but what's gonna be in the steam? This is after 100 trucks with infectious articles have come into our area. So some questions. I get the, that these gentlemen have just said that the ethylene oxide will not be used, so let's mark that off. Okay, what landfill will be used? It's not in, in Cartersville, I'm hearing, but it is somewhere that will affect some people and will affect our environment.
I, I can, and I'm gonna do my best, I'm not gonna interrupt you throughout the whole thing, but I do think I can answer that at least.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know, I don't know where they're taking their ways, but I do know that I had a conversation with the commissioner, and if there was any concerns on the part of the Bartow County landfill with handling that waste that was processed, and they've looked at it and they have, they have no issue.
Okay, what about the drugs? Now, in the middle of an opioid crisis, we're going to have drugs stored in our community. Okay, they're going to move them to another place. Where is that other place? And how will those be, how will they be destroyed? Will they become part of our water? How will that work? That's a question that I have. Also, for the city of Cartersville, that we love and is a wonderful place to live, and that's why we're here tonight, because we want it to stay a good place to be. Just from the business standpoint, how many jobs will this produce for Cartersville job How will this business actually benefit us? Those are some questions that I have.
Okay.
So is that all I do now? Say thank you and goodbye?
I don't, I don't know where they're taking them. They said pretty clearly that the drugs were gonna be undercover or under lock if they're following the DEA rules, and that they would be transported out of state to be, to be processed. And I guess if you, if you'd like to step, would, would one of y'all care to address those questions? If you'll step back up to the podium and please, if you'll continue to address council and we'll kind of act as a, thank you. Sure.
So first of all, let me respond to the Sterigenics plant again. And Sterigenic Plant Smyrna is directly across the street from where I grew up, so I'm pretty sensitive to that area. This, you know, as we said, there's, that is a chemical process, and in a chemical process, there is, just by nature of the fact that we're chemical processes, there is some emission of some form in that. This is a steam heating process, so the chemical makeup of what comes into that process doesn't change. It is just heated and the life is destroyed, the material life of maybe in it is destroyed. So there aren't emissions. There's, there's steam, there's steam coming out, but there aren't emissions coming out. So we are, we would be as concerned as anybody about ethylene oxide, but that is not what this, what this is. With regard to the pharmaceuticals, a couple of questions that we asked. One is, where would that be going? I think Brandon mentioned, there is a, there is an incinerator option that's available to have. now and there are various other incinerator options that are available to us. Those decisions will be made on a business basis, but the DEA requires that this, this type of material be destroyed in an incinerator. So, it's not allowed to go into a landfill, it's not allowed to go into any facility like that. So, we're bringing that in and we're, and we're taking it, loading it from truck to truck and then taking it back out to an incinerator, an incineration provider for us. With regard to the water, a part of the reason that the requirements are stringent as they are for the treatment of pharmaceuticals is for the very purpose of water purity. And so, the reason that this is, this traffic is so controlled is to make sure that pharmaceuticals like this are not washed down with toilet and enter, which is unfortunately is what very frequently happens. So, the laws are increasingly strict, in fact, this past year, we even made more stringent to make it criminal to wash these drugs down with toilet so that they do end up in our bloodstream. So, if anything, we are hopefully contributing to the remaining purity of the water stream by being a part of the system that ensures that these pharmaceuticals stay out of that. As far as the opioid thing, that is the reason for the security that we have. We recognize that, that there are pharmaceuticals there and that there could be, likely, might be someone who, where it was there, might have an interest in that, which is the reason that the DEA has the security requirements. And Brandon didn't make mention of this, but it's, these are not just pharmaceuticals, are not just stored in a metal warehouse, they're stored in vaults and they're, they're very stringent requirements on how long it would take to get into those vaults, how long it would take to enter these fenced areas. And the reason those requirements are there is to ensure that that difficulty of entry combined with the security that's in place would ensure that by the time someone could get in there, the security would be on site to stop. So, it is, it is as safe from that perspective as, as any site can be where there's going to be that kind of thing. Think, is there anything else that I do not just-
There was, there was one other question about jobs. I think you, the anticipations that have filled out this would create 25 to 30.
Can I ask them something?
Sure. You could, you could, why don't you ask me and then we'll, we'll just continue to play this, this, yeah, yeah, we'll play this. Let me be the string of the tin can game, how about that?
Okay, so what do you see would be the biggest benefit for Cartersville from accepting your company here?
I, I would look at it from, it's the same as any business that would be coming in to Cartersville. We're a provider of jobs, we're, we're a provider not only of the 25 jobs that we would have, but there's a ripple effect of, of business that we would be bringing in as well. So, it's not just the 25 jobs, but it's the, the fuel and the food and everything else that's purchased by all of those in addition to the, in addition to the drivers and everything. One other thing that, that was asked, I, I asked Josh in response to one of your questions about the waste load to estimate the trucks that are coming in. I believe when Josh was answering that question, he was answering the question with regards to municipal solid waste and construction demolition waste, not the medical waste component of this. So, I don't want to give the impression that there are 100 trucks backed up, you know, full of medical waste. And one thing that may be helpful as you envision this, the medical waste that comes into this facility is red bag boxes. If you look into the back of one of the trucks that brings this waste, it looks like you're looking into the back of a UBS truck. So, it's different than what you may have in your mind when you're thinking about waste. I'm talking about the medical waste side of this. It's what you see in your doctor's office that's placed in red bags and then placed into heavy corrugated cardboard boxes sealed up, carried around. So, when Josh is talking about 100 trucks, we're not talking about 100 trucks of medical waste. It's just one of those.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, if you have any of your questions for counsel, happy to hear those. And then if there's something specific to the company, my guess is that Mr. Bowen and Mr. Cash, I mean, you could have a conversation with them to get those answered and if you have concerns, express them to us.
I appreciate your coming up here to respond.
And I say that, I don't want to feel like you're being cut off because I do appreciate your coming here. We spoke earlier and I do appreciate your coming and having those questions and it always makes me feel good when people come up and want to ask questions in the way of people that are here to, to give answers, so.
I think it helps all of us when any issue is explicated, we can all come to a consensus or be more collaborative and rather than oppositional, absolutely.
Thank you.
My main concern, of course, is always public help. Many of you know I'm a psychologist and so I'm very interested in what makes us better and what makes us more functional and good business does, but again, we do always have to have, I think, a real concern and a priority for public help. And so, that is why I'm here tonight.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you all. And we do continue on with the public hearing for SU 19 dash 07. Anybody else wish to contribute this evening? May step forward and do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for SU 19 dash 07. We will take this up for consideration at our meeting on December 5th, which is at 9:00 AM on that morning. So, we'll continue on. Ms. Brock, you have the next item.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel. The city has contacted GMA regarding customer service workshops for our employees. It will be customer service training for approximately 236 employees. It does exclude police and fire as they do extensive training on their own and I am asking for approval of this agreement with GMA to conduct the employee training.
Okay, any discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like side? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Archer, you have the next item.
You have in your, in your agenda documents, a contract for purchase of property that's already been signed by the property owner, Jim Stafford. The council had authorized my office to contact and negotiate the sale of some property that's in the vicinity of the water treatment plant that Mr. Stafford owns. Y'all had authorized, paid him $10,000 for a little over an acre. The property is appraised currently for $12,200. Mr. Stafford has agreed to sell it for the $10,000. He's already signed all the documents necessary to do the closing and we would recommend that the council authorize mayor and city clerk to sign the contract that's in your package.
Would you please just give a short history on how that, I think some who might know, Jim, might, if you just kind of clarify how all that came to be?
Yeah, I don't specifically recall this, but Keith in my office, with my office, has, has looked into this and he tells me that that property came available, it was offered to the city, the city declined to purchase it, didn't think they had an interest in it at that time and this is years ago. And when the city, I think Jim was recommending the city buy it and when the city did not buy it, then Jim bought it. And it was fully disclosed at the time, I understand. And so, he sat on it, he's held it all these years and now he, of course, he's been retired now for, what, five or six years. And he's willing to sell it and apparently the city thinks it has a need for it at this time.
Thank you. I thought, just thought it was important to get that history out there on that. There's no discussion, the chair's, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please, Mr. Archer.
Yeah, in connection with the county widening of Caswhite Road, there was a city natural gas line that was within the, the right of way and the city negotiated with the county, left a portion of that line in the right of way. County paid to move another portion of that line and what the agreement that is before you tonight provides that if, if that line that is within the right of way currently ever needs to be moved by the county, that they will pay for the entire expense of it, including the acquisition of the necessary easements to relocate it.
Okay, questions, comments or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. When the minutes come, I want to see who, Meredith, what happens on that. Contract or estimate, Ms. Brock?
Yes, this is an agreement with the city and David Arnold with Ace Construction regarding pricing for the renovation of the old fire station. Mr. Arnold submitted a proposal with pricing for $125 per hour with a not to exceed 50 billable hours. It will include 24 hours onsite visits for analysis, complete shop drawings, reports and all of that information will be available to the city after completion and I ask for your approval of this agreement.
Remind me the timeframe for getting that together?
Once approved, I should have information by December 20th to you all.
Thank you. All right, any discussion, if not a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Wilson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. This, this is in regards to the, to the Douthat Ferry project. Our city of Carlsville has been notified that according to GDOT surveyors, that our consultant survey pavement evaluation is out of tolerance in certain portions of Douthat Ferry Road project. And this is actually due to our resurfacing project that we did earlier this year. The original survey was done prior to the resurfacing and so now that we have a new layer of asphalt on Douthat Ferry Road, it does not meet the required tolerance by GDOT in certain locations and so we need to do some re-survey and this amount is proposed, will, can be done for a fee of $4,800. In order to keep this project moving forward, we do recommend approval of this change order.
And if you will please share what that tolerance level is that the DOT requires?
Point one foot, a little over an inch.
Thought it was interesting to note that it's a pretty small tolerance. Not very tolerant at all, actually. All right, Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hill, you've got the next three. Sorry to wake you up. I knew you would.
Evening, Mayor and Counsel. Let's see, my first one here is for the Underground Protection Center. It's, this is where we get all the locate notices for the city that we do, the gas system does all the locates during the daytime and the evenings, all the separate utilities do their own. But this bill comes to us, it's for $10,655.38. It's a budgeted item, ask that you approve.
Okay, any discussion and if not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, continue, sir.
Okay, back to the Transco project. We are having to do some electrical work to electrify our site and we will also provide power for the Transco portion of this site. We received some request, not request, we received some proposals. They, the one that we're recommending is from Complete Electrical Systems of White, Georgia. It's for $22,996. The high bid on that happened to have been 85 grand, so there's quite a swing here on these prices, but we're recommending that y'all approve that.
Thank you. Questions, comments or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one for you, Michael.
Okay, back to Transco again. We need some software that is going to operate the regulator station that's going to be placed on Brown Farm Road. So, this software is called a Talon Control Software. It's $6,675 and we're asking that you approve this. This is a sole provider and it is a budgeted item.
Okay, any discussion on this item? If not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Michael. Mr. Jones?
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we've got our watershed protection plan. This will be the implementation phase. This is a requirement of our new NPDS permit that we received in March last year. This is something we've been working on for a while. You've seen this come up in various phases through engineering and design of the plan. This would be for the first full year of implement, implementation. It is for eight sites and it is a budgeted item and the full cost for the first year would be $59,500 and that would be through Rent McDuff and Associates that would implement the plan for us.
Okay, any questions for Bob on this? And if not, a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Ryan Hart, you're going to finish us out this evening. No pressure.
I'll try, I'll try to make it painless. Honorable Mayor and Counsel, I bring tonight, the first item is the annual software maintenance invoice for our Cogswell. Cogswell is our billing software. Without them, we will not be able to bill any customers for uses of utilities. The invoice is for $86,169.92. It is a 10% increase over the last year. Cogswell will use these funds along with the funds collected from other customers that they have or to provide support services and ongoing product improvements. This is a budgeted item and I recommend approval of Cogswell invoice for $86,169.92 and this is the sole source provider.
Okay, any discussion? If not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next one I have is the annual amendment for the 2018, 19 budget. At the end of the fiscal year, we go through some changes and one of the, one of the changes and specifications from GAAP, which is generally accepted accounting principles, is that we go in and amend the general fund, special revenue funds and the SPOSS funds. This is done in order to bring them back into balance with the actual monies collected revenue wise and also the expenditures. Again, this is done annually. These adjustments reflect the necessary changes to bring the budgets back into balance and I recommend your approval. Of course, this is the first reading, but in the next meeting, I will be making sure that this is recommended for approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Tom on this? This is the first reading, we'll take this up for final vote on December the 5th and if you'll conclude us with the monthly financial statement.
Yes, sir. We're going to be looking at the September 2019 and comparing to September 2018 information and the general fund revenues increased last year by about $5,000. Expenses increased by $565,000. Areas of revenue I look at on a monthly basis of the local offering sales tax have an increase there of about $88,000 and the billing permits and inspection fees have a decrease there of about $63,000. And the water and sewer fund revenues decreased last year by $119,000. Expenses increased by $1.2 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses and increased capital expenses. The big increase being in the capital expenditures as the projects are getting, the water projects are now gearing up in large doses of, or large amounts of money being spent. And the gas fund revenues decreased over last year by $173,000. Expenses decreased by $677,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased costs of purchase of gas and decreased capital expenses. And the electric fund revenues increased over last year by $137,000. Expenses increased by $68,000. This is due to increased personnel expense, increased operating expense, decreased cost of purchase of electricity and decreased capital expenses. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. Solid waste fund revenues increased over last year by $123,000. Expenses increased by $166,000. This is due to increased personal expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And finally, the fiber optic fund revenues increased over last year by a rule of $1,000. Expenses decreased by $173,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and decreased capital expenses. And finally, our cash position for the month of September, and the unrestricted funds, they decreased by a little over $1 million, by about $1.5 million, and total restricted cash increased by about $1 million. That's my report for the evening.
Is that cyclical, the unrestricted, the dip in that?
Yes.
Okay.
And that basically happened because we've got money going out, but we don't have a lot of money to come in, and the months of September, October, well, October, November, December, we will see that number increase by tax collections.
Got you. And then it'll build back up.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I was thinking. Yes, sir.
Have we ever thought, I mean, obviously, watching this for as many years as we have now, you know, the main fluctuation that we have in each department is capital expenses. Like, you know, we spent a good bid in one year. Is there, have you ever thought, for me, like, I always try to take those out, just to see operationally how we're really doing. Is there a way to show that, to be more transparent, where, you know, I understand, you know, the gas department's capital expenses in 2018/19 are going to be pretty high because they did a project?
I can certainly take them out. That, what I'm presenting here is done on a cash basis. We do take all those out at the end of the fiscal year, so the audited numbers will have those numbers taken out capital-wise.
Okay.
And those, those numbers for capital expenses will be put in the asset category.
Okay. All right.
I can certainly do it if you want on the monthly basis.
No, I can follow it a little bit, but I was just saying, a lot of times to the public, you know, people want to know, why did we have this huge fluctuation in the gas department? Well, because we run it, instead of it just being itemized as a capital expense, separate from the operational.
Correct.
It appears as though we have huge fluctuations, and we really don't.
And it depends, too, on what kind of capital projects are going on. Some years when, you know, you may have a lot of capital projects going on, some years you may scale back quite a bit, especially when the economy is falling back down, capital projects aren't really a common thing to be doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tom? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have been reminded, and I didn't take it out of my hand, because I always forget notes that get passed to me, that the city offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday. I'll go out on a limb and say if you have garbage service on either one of those days, to put them out Monday, and be patient, because we'll have crews out working to do three days' worth of work in one day. It might take until Tuesday. If it doesn't get there Monday, then it's not a deal with the First World problem, and it'll be all right. Our folks get to spend, hopefully, a little bit of time away, or we'll have city staff working even while we're celebrating a holiday on Thursday, making sure the city is safe and wonderful, and I just want to say thank you to the 363 folks that work for the city of Cartersville every day to make this place fantastic. I guess I'll include that to 369, if I include the six folks that are sitting up here, or 370 with David, but that doesn't count. But great place to be. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and thank you for everybody that does what they do to make our community a wonderful place. So, that being said, chair will entertain them or motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Not get our phone call.